Good evening. I will call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for July 20th, 2020 at 6:25 PM, and note that all members of this board are present and accounted for. There are three items, the first being approval of the minutes of the Licensing Board Regular Meeting of July 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion. Second, any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration. Item number two, Original Class B Combination License for Midpoint Eatery and Sports Pub, LLC at 228 Tap House, the slash the venue at 228 North 6th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then item number three, Amusement Arcade License for Windy City Food, LLC, 228 Tap House slash the venue and 228 North 6th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Being that there's no further items, I will adjourn by to call the Chair.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have five items on the agenda. First is the minutes from our meeting on July 6th, 2020. I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
And a second. If there are any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Award Contract 20-15, West Bend Community Memorial Library, Lower Level Recreation Center, Built Out Phase One. Good evening, Mike.
Evening, John. Thank you. The Library Recreation Center project that we are discussing this evening includes a construction of a lobby, dance studio, multipurpose room, hallway with storage, men and women's restrooms, and this would all be located in the lower level of the library. These rooms will be used for park and recreation classes and also programs for the library. Our department is requesting this evening permission to award the following contracts. The first one would be to North Central Construction Corporation for general construction for $140,156. The second contract would be for B2 Hooper Corporation for Fire Protection. That is in the amount of $12,900. The third contract is Joe DeBelik Plumbing and Heating Company for the plumbing work. That would be $31,574. And the fourth one would be to Gilletts or Electric Services for electrical work for The total for those four contracts is $207,370. We would then look at a seven and a half percent contingency for all four, which would be $15,500. So total commitment this evening, we're looking at $222,920. During the bidding process, we also included, we had a bid package for HVAC. We did not receive any bids for HVAC. There were some contractors there, and we contacted them after the bidding process, and they said they were just busy and they just didn't have kind of time for the project. We've already gone out for bid for the HVAC, gone back out for bid just for that. Those same contractors have already picked up the big, the bid packages. So we do have some interest in that. The estimated cost for the HVAC is $131,100. So even if you take tonight's commitment, the HVAC, the contingency for HVAC, construction oversight, and the entire project right now, we are looking at $371,000. Our pre-bid estimate was $381,000. So the four contracts for this evening that we are discussing, and we've gone out for bid again for the HVAC, everything's falling right in line with the pre-bid, pre-construction cost estimates that Zimmerman Design put together for us. So right now it looks as if we have the funding through the Recreation Enterprise Fund, the Library Reserve Fund, the Early Risers Kiwanis, their wonderful donation. We had also another anonymous donation. So we should have enough money in our budget or in our account to cover all this. And I'd also like to note that the Friends of Parks also paid for, or donated the money for the design for the original project. So again, big shout out to all the donors in this community. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All right. Any questions for Mike? Alderman, Allen?
Mike, I guess the question I have is, is the HVAC portion going to block any other parts? In other words, is it on the critical path? Has that been taken into account? And what if the responses are, I mean, if the people come back and don't provide a responsive bid?
Great question. From all indications, we will be receiving at least two bids, it looks like, from two different companies. So we're fairly confident that we will be receiving HVAC bids for this. One of the reasons why we want to get the authorization this evening for these other four, a lot of it is designed and, designed to build and construct. So these folks have to put their plumbing plans together, get it to the plumbing inspector, get it reviewed, and then they can start their work. So there's a lot of planning yet for some of these companies ahead of time before they can start swinging a hammer, or using a saw, or anything else like that. So that's why we wanted to get the commitment this evening for those four contracts, so they can get started on their work, and we can get slotted into their, their project list. And they can get started without the HVAC. We got to cut the concrete in the floor, things like that, start with a lot of that plumbing work, we got to get that done before walls can go up and all that. So work can start, physical work can start, but it's a lot of the pre-planning that they need to get done ahead of time. And we want to get on our schedule. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
And thank you, the donors, for all their effort. Item number three, Approval of Long Storm, Term Storm Water Maintenance Agreement, Town Place Suites. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. This item is one of the agreement that we, the city enters into with property owners who receive the storm water management permit. So it's based on a template that you have seen before. It is an agreement to ensure that the property owners will maintain the best management practices that they are supposed to build, to properly manage storm water on their property in accordance with the City Municipal Code and the DNR rules that the city has to follow under the MS4 permit. So we have granted the permit to the Town Place Suites Development at the corner of Water Street and Forest Avenue, and therefore we recommend that this agreement for this permit be approved by the Board and Council.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Okay, any questions for Max? There are none? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, item number four, Award Contract 20-14, Schmidt Road Resurfacing. Max?
Thank you again. This contract is for the road resurfacing of Schmidt Road from Creek Road to Barton Avenue. This is a contract that we're going to do under our pavement maintenance program this year. And we received two bids on Monday, July 6th, and they're summarized in your memo. The low bidder is Pen and Dolan of Jackson, Wisconsin, and we reviewed their bid as well as their qualifications, and we believe that they're, they're qualified to, to do this work under this contract. And therefore, we recommend award of this contract to Pen and Dolan for the amount of $466,540, as detailed in their bid, as well as a contingency fund of $23,600, I mean, $460 for total allocation not to exceed $490,000 for the construction of this project.
Okay, you have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Quick question, I just see there's only two people that bid. Is there a reason why, like, less? I feel like usually we have at least four to six. Is there something different about this road, or?
Usually for construction contracts, we would have probably half a dozen contractors. However, when it's strictly paving, we only have two or three major paving contractors in this area that would submit bids. In last year, when we did Paradise Drive, it was the same two contractors that had submitted some bids. So it's been a trend to have two or three for those resurfacing or paving contracts like that.
So we've worked with these folks before?
Yes, several, several times throughout a lot of years.
All right, anyone else? Yes, Alderman, Allen?
Yeah, the question I have is, how did this come up? How did the bidding compare to your, your pre-bid estimate?
I believe the pre-bid estimate was really close to, to the bid. It was probably a little lower. I believe it was at six, at $450,000 or $460,000. So we were really close to, to the estimate. And even though these prices were a little higher than the pre-bid estimate, we think it's worth it to, to move forward with the contract because the difference was very small.
Okay. It would be helpful if we had a few more competitors, but this area just doesn't have the competitive competition out there, so it makes it a little tough to try to get a good, better price.
That is true.
All right, all right. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item number five, Award Contract 20-13, Crack and Joint Sealing of Pavement at Various Locations. Good evening, Max. One more time, Max.
Thank you again. This is another contract that we would like to do under our pavement maintenance program this year, and it's for crack and joint sealing of pavement at various locations. We received four bids on July 6th as well, and they are listed in the memo. And the low bidder is Denler Incorporated from Juliet, Illinois. This is a company that has not worked in the city in the past, and therefore, we contacted several communities in Wisconsin where they have done work recently. We have the city of Janesville, the city of Kenosha, city of New Berlin, city of Waukesha, and city of Guadalupe, where they have done work in the past two to three years. All references came back with positive recommendations. And therefore, we would like the Board and Council to award Contract 2013 to Denler in the amount listed in their bid of $80,008.25, and a contingency fund of $4,491.75 for total allocation not to exceed $84,500 for the crack sealing and joint sealing for this year.
Motion to approve.
All right, any questions?
Do we have a second?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a second. Okay, any questions for Max?
Max, what's the, the reason for the huge discrepancy between lowest and the largest?
Unfortunately, I don't know what that, what, why that is. The second bidder, actually the third bidder, which is American Pavement, had our contract for the past couple of years, and their unit price per pound at that point was the same unit price that we're getting from Denler here. So my guess would be that maybe their schedule was full already, and in order to do our contract, they would probably have to pay their guys overtime, so then they raise their price per pound of, of sealant. And that's probably why we see that discrepancy.
Max, I want to thank you for sending this little sheet out last week regarding the poundages. Did not go up much as far as crack sealing. It was only a couple cents more, so we know that that was a good price, and it's right in the ballpark. So thank you for that extra work. I appreciate that.
Sure, we usually look at past contracts to make sure that the unit prices are reasonable and follow the trend that we've seen in past years.
Okay, okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no further business before the Board of Public Works adjourn.
All right, good evening. I'll call to order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for July 20th at 6:30. And note that all members of the council are present and accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and moral.
Thank you. All know that we have 15 items on the agenda, the first being approval of the minutes of the Common Council Regular Meeting of July 6th.
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, items two through seven.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on those? Seeing none, then, all those in favor, so do by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration, the first is item number eight, Appointment of Maximilian Salinin to the Tourism Commission. Thank you. Is there a second?
Do, do we have any background on, on the individual?
I actually provided that application to the clerk's office. I don't know if it ever made it into the packet. If not, I can give you a brief. He's a member of the Rotary Club. He grew up in West Bend. He's a business and marketing rep with Delta Defense, just interested in getting involved and continuing to promote the community.
So will he be replacing one of the members currently?
Yes, he's the business rep. Jay, what's that?
He's replacing Mike Nowak.
Thank you. He'll be the business rep, yep. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so do by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Move on to item number nine, the 2021 Budget Preview, and we'll have Administrator Shambo kick us off.
Good evening, everyone. Hey, look at that. Maybe I wasn't supposed to do that. Uh-oh, I hear him coming. That means I wasn't supposed to push that button. Sorry. My bad. All right, thanks, John.
No problem.
All right, good evening, all. 2021 Budget Discussion, exciting times. We get to talk about the next year's budget, a little bit of a preview, and have some conversation about what staff, the mayor and finance chairman are thinking regarding what's coming in 2021. I will email this PowerPoint to you all at the close of tonight's meeting, along with the, to the department heads. The mayor and I just had a chance to review it and finalize it late this afternoon. Some trends coming in this, or existing in this year and coming in 2021. We did have a fund balance increase in time since 2011, a significant one, up to 26.87, which we closed the year 2019 at. But as you all know, 2019 did see a slight decrease of 1.44% due in large part because of increased health insurance costs and our landfill situation. The debt for the city has decreased again significantly over time. You can see the rather large drop of $33 million in 10-year period of time. We did again have a slight increase in 2020, so the numbers are all 2019, end of year, except for this one. This is a projected number through 2020's borrowing. So it includes 2020's borrowings that I will highlight in a, in a little more detail in a second. We see our assessed values continue to rise. Our market is strong. That's good news. Jeff and his team in the assessor's office is planning for a revaluation again in 2021 due to that market, which is continuing to be strong. Tids are continuing to improve as well. We did have, some of you who were on the council in the past remember the correction, they, the state gave us more value in 2018, and that caused a rather significant drop as they corrected for that too large of an increase provided in 18 and 19. And so in 2020, this current year, the current year assessed value, we should see the correction back to something that assists our tids and our donor tids of being more productive for, for this coming budget year. So good news on that front. The next three charts just show the fund balance and debt in a graphical format. You can see the slight dip in fund balance in the blue line as a percentage in 2019. And then in total fund balance, the, the chart of just, just over $8 million of unassigned fund balance. We still have a strong fund balance in the city of West Bend. Goals for 2021, moving forward, continue our current level of services. Sometimes the department heads get tired of hearing this, but this isn't a year that we're likely to see government grow in West Bend. 2021 is a, a year of some unknowns, and the very next bullet talks about the financial impact of COVID-19. We're not entirely sure what that's going to mean for us next year. We're still working on what it means for us this year and the revenue in particular impacts that, that have affected the city. We'll likely revisit the health insurance plan next meeting. Our Horton, the Horton Group is our, is our advisor for our insurance, our insurance advisor for our health plan, and they're going to be here sharing some more detailed information. I'll give you a preview to that now. We've had a rather rough year, a rough 18 months, as a self-insured health plan can go through at times. So they're going to be here sharing some details about that rough period, and then begin to bounce some ideas off you all as to how we might make some modifications to that health plan moving forward. The addition of body cameras is something that Chief Moiler and his department have been working on for some time. They are confident in their recommendation that 2021 is the year to implement body cameras in, in the city of West Bend. The specifics of that, I'll allow Chief Moiler to talk through with you, but I trust that this is the, the right time. He's, I know he's been working on it for a while, and it's been something that has been coming to the city and will be an annual cost that's going to be significant for our operating budget. So I wanted to highlight it as a budget goal to include the, the cost of those cameras. And then the vehicle leasing program we talked about at the last meeting. To utilize an appropriate amount of net new construction, tax levy increase, what that new, that new construction is, we won't know yet until the numbers come out from the state. The mayor, Alderman Kennedy, and myself have discussed a merit increase of up to 2% for our non-represented employees. Excuse me, the last few years, we've been at one and a half, and then two, and two and a half last year was the largest increase our employees saw in some time. So a recommendation of going back to the 2% increase in 2021 is, is a number that we feel confidently we're going to attempt as a staff to, to make for, for the budget year 2021. And then the distinguished budget award, shooting for that for the third year in a row. Some challenges, I list four. I'm sure there are many more that we could come up with if we whiteboarded a whole bunch of them, but some, some highlights, and I'll talk through each of these in a little more detail. The dark star issue, I was, I was really hoping that we wouldn't have to list this as a potential challenge after last year's really good news, when Menards settled their lawsuit for tax years 2016 through 18. They dropped the case in the 11th hour, if you recall, which was really good news for the city of West Bend and our taxpayers. However, they still have 2019 open and have again challenged for 2020. Walmart has been challenging for some time. You can see 2017 through 2020. I did list the specifics for Walmart, partly because it's, it's so frustrating. That Walmart building has been there for 20-some years. Had a significant addition of about $10 million-ish a few years ago. It sold last year for 17.3 million in a arms-length transaction, a public sale that was recorded and widely known in fair game. And then we had an assessment done through the process of them being in a challenge with us at 16 million. Jeff reassessed appropriately, so close to the market. So he did a market study for all of the big boxes, not just for the Walmart based on the sale, but all of the big box stores saw a specific market study for their, their specific areas. And it ended up raising Walmart's assessment from 12-something to 16.7. And Walmart appealed this year at something probably less than raw land sale price in that area, 5.6 million. So again, I just talked through that one in a little more detail because it's, it's frustrating, and it's been ongoing for a long time. Home Depot and Freiter have also challenged their 2020 assessment, and all four of those were before the Board of Review this past week. And process-wise, they all asked for a waiver from the Board of Review, and in the past, we've done some of that, but I'm really pleased with our, Council's recommendation to not, to not have the Board of Review do that, but rather to give us a month or so to subpoena some data from them that we've been unable to receive in the past. And we're hopeful that we receive this data in Freiter, for Freiter, for an example, the actual cost of putting the building up. That is data that we will be asking for by way of subpoena. And miscellaneous data from all of the other three that are in their sale history and that kind of good stuff that Jeff uses for his assessed value. So stay tuned on, on this issue. It's ongoing and frustrating. We probably thought it was going away based on the court cases, and I know we've talked about this a fair amount with Alderman that have been on for a while, but it's, it's one to still stay, stay in touch with and a potential challenge and would have a significant impact on our budget if we were to lose four years of Walmart, for example, at the 12 million or, in the future, at the $16 million value down to five.
Looks like Alderman didn't have a question.
I think you kind of just answered my question. While these are being challenged, all of those years that are being challenged, those remain unpaid?
Nope, they, they are paid. They're paid at the value that we are assessed them, we assess them at.
Okay, I thought maybe that held that up. Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
The budget hit would be if they were to win, the city would have to repay the value.
So they get money back if they win, I guess, okay.
Clear, sir.
You know, Freiter's been here, what, six months now? I mean, they're a new building. And when these businesses come in and tell us they want to build these big buildings, which is great, it's going to have an impact on our tax roll, you know, which $10, $12 million in our tax roll, and the minute they open the doors, they turn around and slap us with this and say it's only worth $5 million. So I guess, I don't know how to word this, but why are we believing when they tell us it's going to be worth $12 million when all of a sudden, the minute they open the door, they tell us it's worth five?
It's frustrating.
Any other questions? Kennedy?
When you say Freiter, is it the Freiter just across from Walmart? Or is it like a collective, all the Freiterts? Because isn't there one kind of by the fairgrounds? There's a few Freiterts, I thought.
Yeah, the one in West Bend right across from Walmart, the new facility.
Okay.
I thought that Freiter was nonprofit, but they, they, they pay property taxes?
They paid property taxes, yes. It's not a hospital, it's, it's a medical facility.
I thought the whole system was nonprofit, apparently not.
Okay, thanks. Is there any other questions on this slide? All right, thanks.
Thanks. The capital improvement plan poses a challenge. As, as you know, we have a red, rather long extensive list on our five-year CIP. The, the council and mayor took action in 2020 to raise that level to $3 million, with $2 million of it dedicated specifically on, on roads. So our budget goal is to maintain a $3 million 2021 borrowing, $2 million of it again dedicated to roads. And in addition to that $2 million, and it would be in addition to the $3 million, I have that number listed at 2.5 for 7th. That number might go down a tiny bit if we're able to, during design, build it for less. I won't put Max on the spot and ask him exactly what that, but that 2.5 number is what we've been using for, for budget. So you can share with your constituents that in 2021, 7th Avenue will be reconstructed, and we're really excited about that. Maybe I'll just buzz through Mayor, if that's okay, and if there's questions at the end. COVID, this, this slide has some knowns. COVID, this slide has some knowns and unknowns in it as to the level of hotel tax for tourism funding that will be down. We really don't know. Talking to some of our managers in the hotels around here are saying they're as low as 20% occupancy compared to previous years. That's a really scary number. These last few months, there's been a bit of an uptick, they'll say, in June and July, but certainly not to the levels that they were in the past. So, the Tourism Commission will look at this carefully. They have a meeting this week and review what kinds of impacts less hotel tax might mean for the commission and for future funding. Building permit revenues are down in part due to the commercial pause. Quick Trips, well-known, not constructing their buildings, so that's building permit revenue for those, for example, that will not be here in 2020. We do have a potential for Milwaukee Tool to be under construction. We're hopeful that they start yet this year and might bounce back some of that building permit revenue. But again, some unknowns and some more definite knowns, like airport funding. We received some taxi funding, we've shared in the past. Municipal court fines are definitely down in 2020, less people moving around and getting into trouble. Routes to Recovery is a 500, provides a $522,000 allotment through the federal system funneled through the state that the city of West Bend has an opportunity to recover some funds that we've already expended is how that program works. The clerk's office area remodel, we're putting in for that reimbursement in addition to all of the glass that you see in the building, the tempered glass that's been put in, we will seek reimbursement through the Routes to Recovery program. There's overtime salary and some PPE materials for staff that have been already requested reimbursement. We were requesting $48,000 through the first opportunity, and just a couple of weeks ago, we submitted that reimbursement request. And then the large part of, the rest of those funds could come from existing salaries that were dedicated to COVID, and it has to be in an emergency setting. So, we're working through that now. Chief Kudic, Chief Moeller, myself, and Carrie and her team are studying that process to make sure that we dot all the i's properly and cross the t's. But stay tuned on that. We do stand to receive some rather significant reimbursement through the state allotment of the routes, of the federal dollars through the Routes to Recovery program. CARES Act has provided our fire department some funds for lost revenue that they did not receive. And then in Stephanie's area, in the Clerk's Department, there's some special funding, $20,000-ish, that's coming to the Clerk's Department for extra funds that we've expended for the elections. I think list the TID as a potential challenge. We do have water and sewer repayments. We've repaid a large chunk, I'll say, of those funds that were extended to TID in 2020's budget. And looking forward to 2021, Riverwalk contributions will be big. We anticipate the TID, the donor TID number six, providing funds to TID number nine to allow us to build Phase One of the Riverwalk construction in 2021. And then future years, as the TIDS continue to be strong and do well, we'll hopefully repay the levy funds that were tapped over the years and then the developer shortfall payments in a couple of our TIDS where the developers have been propping up and doing their part to fund the shortfalls. They'll see that reimbursement come through future years of the TID. And then to TID 14, I mentioned that we would talk about the borrowing and why we had a debt increase in 2021. It's partly because of TID 14. And the street and utility construction, the utility construction will start in the next month or so. You'll see some work out in River Road. And then the road potentially later in the year or early next year when we build Forge Place. Next steps, the department heads, budget staff draft the 2021 operating budgets. We work on the five-year plan. We have another meeting scheduled with the department head team that has capital improvement plan projects. Ellers will be here again. Phil will join us in August to do a TID and debt presentation. Health insurance modifications, again, I already talked about that. Not only will we have Phil here, will be a budget-laid-in meeting with the Horton Group here as well. And then a 2021 budget presentation with detail, the October 5th meeting, which is about a month before your time to act on it. We'll have another chance in October to review the budget and answer any questions that you might have. And then a quick highlight, that Mayor Jenkins' strategic planning process is kicking off in August of 2020. That's all I had. Other questions for me generally?
Alderman Allen.
Yeah, just remind me what GFOA stands for?
Government Finance Officers Association? Association? I believe that's it. The Cool Cats and the Finance Department.
So, we just accept their policies as, so we can win the award? I mean, we actually made sure that what they recommend makes sense for us?
We do. They have parameters for certain policies that you have to have in place in order to even qualify for the award. We had many of them in place before we ever pursued it, and we did fine-tune a few of those policies prior to pursuing the award. I'm a firm believer in it myself. I think it professionalizes the budget process here and certainly our budget document. It should show to our constituents that we care and are doing our very best to not just get the award, but to put ourselves in a position where we're even eligible for it. And then on an annual basis, they provide feedback, even when we do receive the award, they provide feedback of where we could do better, and Carrie and her team do a nice job of implementing that feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dolmec.
The city is part of the WRS, correct?
Correct.
I don't expect an answer from you now, but I wasn't aware until tonight that we were going to be discussing changes for health insurance that may be necessary. So, I'm curious, perhaps as part of that, we could get some explanation of the pros and cons of us being self-financed versus using WRS health insurance?
Sure, I can ask Alex to talk about that at the next meeting.
And Alex is...
I'm sorry, he's with the Horton Group. He's our rep with the Horton Group.
So, it's his company that is selling us the insurance?
His company sells us the, well, his company, we pay for his company to seek out third-party administrators, to seek out the best value for stop-loss, those things, the best drug plan.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Jay? If not, I'll just highlight that Finance Chair Kennedy and Jay and I, we talked about holding a special meeting in September, so that's on our radar. That'll be more of a roundtable, kind of walkthrough of the budget, department by department, so watch for that. And then just high level on the strategic planning process. This will include the council, Planning Commission members, some board chairs, department heads, some citizen reps, just so we get a really good feel of all the stakeholders within our community. Our plans to work with Paul Robach, who's from the UW system, to develop strategic priorities that really can just be in place to help lead our city as we make tough choices, budget plans, and the like. So, just wanted to let you know.
Is some of that business Paul Robach's doing going to be talked about at the round table, or is that further out?
Two separate things.
Okay.
Yep, that'll be starting in August, like I said. Yep, be coming up. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 10, ordinance to rezone approximately 0.16 acres of land located at 204 South 7th Avenue from RD 2 to Family Residential District to B4 Neighborhood Office and Service District by Kettle Marine Bible Church. Mark Kovac, what you got?
This ordinance is actually an implementation device. The Plan Commission and City Council have previously approved the change to the comp plan for this property over to a commercial use from the residential. You discussed, the Plan Commission discussed that back in June 2nd, you on June 15th. The Plan Commission subsequently held the public hearing regarding the zoning amendment. There were no public comments at that public meeting for or against the zoning amendment. Plan Commission did recommend on July 7th to this body that they were in favor of the zoning amendment, so we would ask that you approve the amendment.
Thank you. So, I'd be looking forward to motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Fair enough.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all's in favor of approving, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Wonderful. Moving on to item number 11, ordinance amending chapters nine and 19 of the municipal code for animal control on city-owned airport lands. Mark again.
Thank you. This is a request to amend two portions of the municipal code. It gives authority to the Director of Development and our Airport Manager to approve removal of nuisance animals from airport, city-owned lands within the airport. This is similar to authority that has already been granted in our, by our council, to Parks Director for animal control within the parklands. However, it differs a little bit from the parklands in that, in this case, the actions are more time-critical due to the need to prevent runway intrusions. It's not a management program for herd size, such as in the deer in the parklands. The action is recommended by both the Federal Aviation Administration, the Bureau of Aeronautics, and most recently by the Federal Fish and Wildlife Staff, who we had out three times removing the same set of three deer from the airport three times. So, again, it's, all removals are done in accordance with the permit approvals and regulations through the state. We ask that you consider amending the code to give us that authority.
Thank you, and I believe we have additional comments. Ian.
So, I also wanted to clarify, the section regarding discharge of firearms also cleans up what, it was something we didn't address previously under the parks removals. This cleans up that firearms can be discharged in the process of either removals at the airport or in the process of removals under the parks director, you know, under the parks departments program. So, just cleans that detail up as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions?
Quick, I just had a question.
Kennedy and Kayla.
Would we be, or would they use the same kind of skilled people that are hunting in the parks? I mean, I know that we have people that are qualified to shoot and kill things humanely and license...
This is not a management program where we can pre-arrange to have those people available. This is on an incident basis, where we have an animal that might be intruding into runway areas. So, we won't be able to use that type of skill set, but we will use trained staff, our own staff, to do it.
So, it's just somebody has a rifle at the airport at all times, and if an animal's in the way they shoot it, is that a thought?
We actually have that authority right now on an extreme emergency situation.
Right.
We just want to codify this, and we've had to do this in the past. When you've got animals sitting on the end of a runway and you've got a corporate jet coming in, the two don't agree very well.
Alderman Kayla.
Just curious, that whole airport is fenced, correct?
It is fenced.
Is there a place for getting in, or are they jumping?
We have this strange cooperation between the deer and the coyotes. The coyotes dig out underneath the fence, and the deer find a way in through that, through those, and we can't always be out there filling up holes constantly.
I was just curious how they're getting in.
And actually, please don't fixate on deer for this. This is an animal control ordinance. We have multiple types of animals that we have to deal with. We have geese, sandhill cranes, we have coyotes, we have raccoons and possums, skunk, all causing certain issues out at the airport that we have to control. We trap where we can, we remove where we can't, where it's ineffective to trap.
Great. Any other questions? Seeing none, we do have a motion second, so all is in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. Thanks, Mark. And we'll move on to closed session. Item number 12, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute Section 19.85, Para 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. This is for purchase agreement for the South parcel of TID number 12, parcel number 1119-1320-058.
So, moved.
Okay, looks like there's motion and second multiple times. We'll need a roll call vote.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Burkwest.
Aye.
Alderman Kayler.
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick.
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster.
Aye.
Alderman Madal.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're in closed session.
Thank you. We'll be going to closed session into the police classroom and then resuming back out here.[1546.88]
All right, we are back in open session and moving on to item number 13, decision regarding purchase agreement with American Construction Services for the South parcel of tid number 12, parcel number 1119-1320-058. And we'll start with our city attorney reading the motion at hand.
So we're looking for a motion to enter into a purchase agreement with Trails Edge LLC for the parcel you mentioned to close prior to the end of the year.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any discussion questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, so do I saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Wonderful. And thank you to Trails Edge for investing in our city. We'll move on to reports, number 14, a report by Alderman Dolnick or Alderman Huchster regarding the planning commission meeting.
Planning commission met on July 7th. Couple of the things we did, one of the things we approved tonight was the change in the two-family residential from R2 to B5 for the Kellamarine Bible Church. We approved a conditional use permit and site plans for ground and building mounted solar electronic system over at Regoware. Taco Bell came with some changes to the new building that they're planning on, or the remodel of the building that they're planning on buying over on West Washington Street. We approved those changes. A couple of certified survey map changes, common property line at 221 and 235 Arbor Point. And another change altering a property line at 1950 East Paradise. And we took two lots and made them into one at 50, I'm sorry, one lot and made them into two at 5064 Highway P for Quam Engineering. Last thing we talked about was we wanted to set a public hearing for a change in the land use from industrial to multi-family residential in the 2020 comprehensive plan for Westbin. 15.1 acres located at 285 Sand Drive, and that is the old Westbin Concrete Company. And that was about it.
Great. Any questions for Alderman Huchster? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 15, a report regarding the joint review board.
I'm not sure if there's much more to share other than what I did during the budget presentation, but we did have some assessment challenges. The clerk Stephanie and Jeff presented the role and did all that formal annual procedural stuff with the Board of Review. They did schedule another meeting for August, August 19th. That's when we hope to have the subpoenaed information back and allow the board to take the next step.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll open it up if there's any other announcements for the good of the order. Seeing none, I'll adjourn by the call of the chair. Have a great night.